Essentials of Support Staff Program. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is Jennifer Raze, Account Clerk Two for the Reno Justice Court. And Jennifer has completed the Essentials of SAP for Financial Staff. Congratulations to Jennifer.
Good job.
And Rochelle Rose, Office Support Specialist for Human Services. The Human Service Agency has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. Congratulations to Rochelle. And Shannon Scott, Appraiser One for the Assistant's Office, has completed Essentials of Management Development. Congratulations to Shannon. And Lona Tett, Office Assistant Three for the Assistant's Office, has completed Essentials of Support Staff Certificate. And Jeremy Wilson, Principal Account Clerk for the Human Services Agency, has completed the Essentials of SAP for Financial Staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. It's great to know that our employees are working continuously and so hard for the citizens of Washoe County, and we really appreciate that. Mr. Manager, I think you've got number four also.
I do.
Yeah?
Yes. Item four is Introduction of Our New Employees. So the Commissioners will come down, our employees can line up here. We'll ask our employees to come up, introduce themselves to the department, and then be welcomed by the Commissioners and the county. So as soon as our Commissioners get in place, Joe, you'll be first. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Joe. I'm with Juvenile Services. I'm the Maintenance Person for the Jan Evans Juvenile Hall Building.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Aida Gutierrez, and I'm with the Human Services Agency, and I am an Eligibility Specialist.
Hi, Diana Flores. I'm with Human Service Agency, and I'm a caseworker.
It's very nice to meet you. My name is Brandy Melville. I'm a criminalist, too, at the Washoe County Sheriff's Office in the Forensic Science Division.
Good morning. My name's Ben West. I'm the new County Security Administrator.
That was always good to have new employees coming on board with us and working on top projects, so we appreciate it. Mr. Manager, we'll go to public comment.
Item five is public comment. Comment heard on this item is limited to three minutes per person, may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission's agenda. The Commissioner will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Thank you very much. First on our list is Mr. Frank Wright. I don't see Mr. Wright. I know he's here because I saw him earlier, so let's go to Ms. Elise Weatherly.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly, a Washoe County resident. And I'm wearing my T-shirt today still here, even though I'm not still here with, you know, a lot of other people. But what I am still here to do is I get so frustrated sometimes, I'm sure everybody does, when you speak, and you speak, and you speak, and you fall on deaf ears. So I'm not going to go with the theological point this time, because I know that God is in charge of the weather, and He can control His world with that weather. But let's go ahead and talk about money instead, because this is what this is all about. You guys remember that Mr. Ma movie, where he was a very successful car designer, right? Lost his job. Well, he was, by the way, he was driving to work with his wonderful boss, kind of the bosses that I used to have at Western Bancorp Data Processing Company, First Interstate Bank, and Eldorado Resorts. While they were just, you know, giving you all kinds of accolades, they were sharpening their knife for your back. Imagine that in the real world. So what he did was, he was really good at his job, but he got placed in a job that he wasn't so good at. And this lady came along, rolled down her window, said, "You're doing it wrong." And he could have done a couple different things. He could have, you know, raged and ranted and flipped her off or whatever, but he kind of cowered and went, "Okay, I'll work on it." So I think what's going on is that I've done some investigation with some of these problems. As soon as there was a Lemon Valley issue, I contacted people and started doing some research and some investigation. And what I discovered kind of ticks me off a little bit. I did a little comparison about the amount of money that was spent out at Lemon Valley for the flooding that God brought on, compared to my neck of the woods, which was zero dollars. We didn't have any problems. So it comes down to money, all right? And just because there's some issues doesn't mean that the county, the rest of us, has to pay for it, please. And part of being in government is that we are supposed to take care of the budgets, right? We're supposed to look at where the money is spent, who it's spent on, how it's spent, if we're getting a good ROI. That's a good county employee that would do that, all right? And now what I would like to say, too, is, where's the TV lady? Where's Terry TV lady? She was here, like, with her boots on, with the red shoes and everything. Why? Well, because she's not here because there's no rumors, there's no whispers, there's no gossip, and so there's no coverage. What I'm saying is that the media doesn't really care about the facts, all right? They only want to get things stirred up so they can get viewers, and that just ticks me off, too. All right. So what I want to say is that some of the money that's being spent, I don't think it's being spent wisely. Who took a look at the Catholic charities that the seniors would deserve $1.5 million for meals? Anybody? Who has taken a look yet at the grandparent rights? Those of us that are paying for the homeless, you know, paying for people that don't pay their bills and paying all this kind of stuff? They're getting to ride the system, and we have to pay for it. Anybody looked into it? Anybody care about that? The other thing about Democrats, I'm sorry to say this, but there's a conflict of logic. I would say whatever you want to believe, check and see if it's factual. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Next is Ms. Tammy Holdstill.
Tammy Holdstill, Lemon Valley, Swan Lake Recovery Committee. For the record, yes, I'm still here, the water's still there. Back to what I discussed earlier in the previous meeting, Alna, in the EMS getting there 30 minutes after the call was made, fire department leaving a burnt vehicle in the traffic lane, not cleaning up the mess, leaving glass in the both traffic lanes. I do have to thank your staff, though. Two of your trucks had to go by my home, and when they went by the home, they had to go through all that glass. So within 45 minutes, there was a street sweeper that came out and cleaned. It was really nice, and I appreciated that. And when the guys went by, I thanked them for calling, because that was nice, considering other staff didn't do their job. Washoe County Sheriff said that that vehicle sitting there was safe. How could it be safe in a travel lane? Yet dark, with no reflectors, no nothing, so that cars can come along and hit it in dark skies. Not right. I also want to commend both Commissioners Jung and Lucy for meeting their primaries. Congratulations. But as I woke up this morning, the words "supercalifragilisticexpialidocious" came to my head. And the reason was because, you know, won that war, but you have a big battle ahead of you. And residents in the valleys are starting to get upset with what's happening, with the lack of response or the proper response. It still seems like a war out there, and we feel like we're in a war, and we're going to keep fighting. That's our jobs, to make sure that the county does their jobs. It's disappointing that those husk bearers were put up, and then there is no long-term mitigation out there whatsoever. But yet, development, for approval of development, keeps happening, knowing that there is an issue out there. There's two issues. One is aquifer injection, and it's a big old circle, and it's injecting into Silver Lake and Swan Lake underneath, in the aquifer, so that water can't saturate into the ground. Then you have development, and those two keep getting bigger and bigger because you have stormwater runoff and you have a fluid runoff. And you have one size lake. Where's it going to go? Until the City of Reno and Washoe County start working together, you have two sewer plants that are causing a problem out there. You have one that you just had to use more rock on to protect it from breaching again. There's a problem.
Thank you. Mr. Sam Diney.
Sam Diney, Diney, the heart and soul and the body and mind of Reno Government, and I continue to object to the fact that you have public comment after the fall derail. Public comment should be at the beginning. The citizens come down there, here, on their own time. All the other organizations in Reno have public comment at the beginning because they apparently like the citizens a lot more than you do. Somebody premeditatedly changed that, and it's wrong. There's bigger fish to fry than, but every fish needs to be fried. These guys think it's all sushi up there. At any rate, I'm responsible, I'm an Air Force Academy graduate, and once again, I'm thankful to have an armed guard over here protecting me against nefarious things that might be happening back in the audience there. Thank you, sir. I'm responsible, I'm an Air Force Academy graduate, I've been around, I've certainly got more military experience. Not that that's everything, I've got more military experience, experience than all of the elected officials in Reno, Reno area added together, for whatever that is worth. I flew B-52 bombers, F-4 Phantoms, defending our nation against enemies inside of the border and outside of the border. And during my period of time, we had basically no wars. What are the chances? At any rate, in 26 years, I'm responsible for 92% of the good things about Reno, starting with saving Bernie, the beloved Burning Man, all by myself. When the county commission, the previous county commission, wanted to shut it down, I came to the podium and said, "Don't do it," and they voted to save, to continue with Burning Man. You'd think those Burning Man people would say, "Hey, Sam, thanks, you've saved them a nice place to go." You'd think somebody from the community would say, "Thank you, Sam. That Burning Man's worth $30 to $50 million a year, according to the media." Same thing with the Air National Guard, same thing with Tesla, same thing down to the bottom. The most important, of course, is I was the driving force that brought medical marijuana to Reno. It eventually would have come, but they were all dragging their feet, and I said, "No, it's legal. The state made it legal," and they were dragging their feet, especially Reno City Hall, and I said, "No, let's make it legal." And now people out there on 7/117, there it is, right there, I even trademarked the date to honor it, 7/117. Those people who know 4/20, that's old school. Now it's 7/1, nice smiley face, 7/117 is the new 4/20, and that is the date that marijuana became legal in Reno. 7/117, pot is legal, that's trademarked, and I don't even use pot. But I have to admit, a week, two weeks ago, I decided to experiment, only to experiment. I had that one puff, and again, one puff does not make an expert make, but it was kind of fun, but if I don't do it again, so be it. Thank you. You're welcome, you're welcome, you're welcome. And you guys are welcome, too.
Mr. Frank Wright, you're next. Yes.
That's a hard act to follow. Frank Wright, I'm from Incline Village. I'm here to speak about the last primary election in Incline. There seems to be a serious problem, and I'm not here to complain about the voter registrar or anybody else. I'm here to acknowledge there's a problem, and when you hear the problem, I think you may be shocked. To begin with, we had a sitting trustee, not up for reelection, manning the polls. That'd be like one of you guys going to the polls and working the polls while the people are voting. But the fact is, he was at a position like I'm at here, and right here is a voting booth. And you talk about intimidation. You have a sitting trustee standing two feet away from a voter, and the other voting booths were pretty big screens, and they were all within the proximity where this guy could see everything that was going on. But he didn't stop there. He went out and recruited people from the shopping center, or the store, it was at Rayleigh's, and pulled them in and talked to them and asked them to come vote. He actually told them how to vote and who to vote for. That's a criminal act. That's a criminal act. Doing it once is a criminal act, but sit there and doing it all day long for the entire time that the early voting took place. And now let's talk about the number of votes he might have swayed. How many votes did he get for those people who were running? It's got to be pretty much, pretty serious. It's got to be a massive amount, because he was there, I'm guessing, eight hours a day. He's not there for the money. He was there for a reason, and that reason was to sway the vote, to get his buddies on the board. And it's a very contentious election up there, because we've had so many things go on there. If you've read the paper over the last year, you've seen some of the things that have gone on. We've got a problem there with the books. We have, one guy controls all the books. You can't get public records. They had a retention policy where they destroyed everything after 30 days. This place is a sewer, and they're trying to keep the sewer active. And this guy was there to make sure that his buddies get on the board. Next problem. One of the candidates who was actually running was sitting, like, right where these chairs are behind me, having lunch every day, all day long. Bruce Simonian, running for office, is there every day working the polls. You know and I know there's a distance requirement. That distance requirement wasn't being met. I'm going to stay here and listen to the voter registrar talk about the election results and things, but I'm asking you, one, to initiate an investigation against Phil Horan. Here's the problem, there were cameras in Rayleigh's. Shouldn't be too hard to see what was going on, take a peeky poo at it. If he influenced one person, he should be in jail. So anyway, it's up to you guys to take a look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Next is Ms. Margaret Martini.
Margaret Martini, Incline Village. I'd also like to talk about the primary elections that happened in Incline Village. While Rayleigh's is a convenient location, it is an inappropriate location for privacy in voting. The way that the booths were oriented was perfectly obvious who was voting for what, because it's so close in there, and because it was located in the deli section. So people were in and out, and all you had to do was really glance over, and you could see some of the voting. And so I think that needs to be addressed. I also think that it is inappropriate, and it was a very big conflict of interest, to have Mr. Horan, who is a sitting member of the Board of Trustees of Incline Village, and there were two trustees running, and there were two trustees that he vocally supported throughout the campaign and was, you know, chatting up with people and stuff, which I think that is also inappropriate. I think that a lot of people that I talked to were kind of intimidated by his presence there. It was like, whoa, you know, he's on the Board of Trustees, we're voting for Board of Trustee positions, and so, and then he can, I mean, he's like from there to there to look and see how you were voting, and it is a small town, and I think that was very inappropriate. And I really feel that an investigation into this policy and to the locations, we used to be at the library, people went to the library, they voted, and that's why you went there. You didn't go there to get a sandwich and kind of look over and see, you know, the voting process. And I also think that I'd like to address the fact that a person running for the Board, Mr. Simonian, seemed to be there almost every time I went in to get groceries or lunch or anything. And I thought that there was some sort of a law that said that someone running for office couldn't be a certain amount of feet from where the people were voting, and there he is, just sitting there, it seemed like, all the time. And I think that needs to be investigated, and I think that, you know, you guys do a good job in looking at things when it's brought to your attention. And so I would ask that you would investigate this and that you would see if there was voter fraud going on, because certainly it seems like there could be. Thank you.
Oops, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Martini. Seeing no more public comment, we will close public comment and bring it back to the Board, Mr. Manager.
Next item is Commissioner County Manager's Announcements, Reports, and Updates, Requests for Information or Topics for Future Agendas.
Do you have anything, Mr. Manager?
I did. I wanted to take this opportunity to talk a little bit about yesterday's incident regarding the Washoe Dam. We were notified about 2:00 PM yesterday by the state. State program for dam safety notified us, and the initial notification was that there was an imminent breach of the Washoe Dam. Following that notification, we followed our emergency action plan for that particular dam, and given the status that we were provided, I made the decision to provide notification to the community that the dam could be breached. There is, for those two lakes, Little Washoe Lake and Washoe Lake, there is a significant amount of water in those lakes currently, and our inundation maps indicated an area along Steamboat Creek that could be affected if that were to be breached. It's important to point out two things. One, the dam is privately owned, and two, the state has jurisdiction on dam safety, dam inspections. So our role really was notification of the public of the potential issue of the breach and the flooding that could occur. Once all of various engineers from the state, from the county, the private dam owner were on scene, they assessed the situation, they instituted, they began mitigation measures almost immediately. I have to give a lot of credit to the owners of the property. They bore responsibility for bringing crews on site, it was their responsibility. They did bring those crews on site, and after several hours, we were able to say that, and the state dam safety program, their engineers were able to say that really we could downgrade the incident to more of a watch situation. I just got notification that it has been canceled completely. So again, dam safety is responsibility of the state. Certainly, we have responsibility in the community to notify, to react. Our sandbagging stations in the southeast area of the Truckee Meadows were stood up almost immediately as soon as we got notification, and we had staff on site well until probably 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock at night, just to make sure. And then our road crews were monitoring throughout the night, driving by, taking a look at the situation to assure us all that the mitigation measures were put in place. So I just would like to give a thank you to our staff, first and foremost, all of our staff that were involved, our road crews, our engineering staff, our communication team, but then also, as I said, to the state and to the private owner, the owners of the dam, for taking responsibility and getting the situation rectified as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioner Hartong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not to have discussion, Mr. Manager, but no county funds were expended for the repair of that dam. We were only there for public safety. Am I correct?
As I mentioned, the private owner of the dam made the phone calls for the construction crews that were out there, and that was his responsibility, and yes, no county funds for the mitigation efforts that were going into place. We did have personnel on site overseeing that operation, and certainly we had some expenses related to the notification process, but nothing outside of the ordinary.
All for public safety, though. Okay, thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, today, June 19th, my father was born in 1918, and I'm very proud. My father was a World War II vet, as was my uncle. My father's been gone now for 35 years, but today is his 100th birthday, and I couldn't be more proud. So on to more, or two important things. June 15th, we had a water main break on Vista. There was a line with a valve, and the bonnet came off that valve. It was a fairly large break. There's a lot of people I want to thank. I'm going to start with Tamwa. Tamwa followed protocol on waiting for location services, and here's why this was so important. Once location services came and they identified what was around the line and they figured everything out, they realized that within five feet of where they needed to dig was a thousand PSI gas line. And had they just got into it, it could have been a massive disaster, other than just some water damage to the road. The road is, has since been opened, but it was a nightmare for people to get back into the east side of Spanish Springs. To make matters worse, and sort of the perfect storm, La Posada was closed because City of Sparks is widening it, so they were all coming through the Sky Ranch neighborhood. It was all good. So I want to start with thanking, of course, our Tamwa crews. They did a great job, they were out there taking care of it. The Sheriff's Office, Sparks PD, Sparks Planning and Engineering, specifically John Erickson and John Martini and Bob Schreiker, Q and D and all of their crews, they were out there also, because they had closed La Posada. Q and D actually graded La Posada to a base level and opened it back up for the emergency. So they were able to comply for us with that, and it was a great effort on their part. And then I really have to thank Dave Solero and especially Duane Smith. Duane was out there immediately, he was on scene coordinating everything from traffic to, you know, how things would be ultimately dealt with in terms of its impact to Washoe County, ensuring, because the front end of La Posada was open and people were being funneled down Rockwell, well, right there at Rockwell and La Posada is Station 17. And Station 17, it was difficult, because cars were backing up throughout the entire neighborhood. Vista Boulevard carries about 20,000 to 25,000-ish trips a day. That's not an exact number, but of course, it was exacerbated because it was a Friday night, then plus the about 9,000 trips that likes to use La Posada. So it was an interesting evening in our neighborhood, to say the least. But we got through it, everybody, there was no real issues, other than there was a fender bender, of course, out on Pyramid Highway in front of La Posada that Station 17 responded to. But I just, I wanted to thank everyone, because it was a real test of how we need to respond to things, especially when there's only one way in and one way out, and it was done very well, and it was very orderly. And I personally, even though I literally could not get in and out of my driveway for, it started about 5:30, and by the time we went to bed, about 11 o'clock, the cars were still bumper to bumper. So it was deep, and I appreciate all of the effort that everyone put in. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartong. Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple things. I do want to thank staff, once again, for the immediate response yesterday on the Washoe Valley Dam. I concur. I think what we did yesterday, even though it might have been an inconvenience to many of the citizens, I think the way we responded was absolutely appropriate. You know, you just never know in situations like that, that could have been more challenging than it was. So I don't think at all that the issue So, I don't think at all that the issue was ever blown out of proportion. I think it was dealt with absolutely in accordance to how we should have. And I want to thank, you know, obviously, you know, Commissioner, Manager Slaughter and Dave Solero, but also the property owners that immediately responded to help us out and invert any true chat, you know, any kind of issue that we may have seen. Big, small, indifferent. It really was the way we responded, in that I want to thank for them. Secondly, I did get the opportunity to stand in for our chair last week at Flag Day, and it was sponsored by the Nevada Bar in the Second Judicial Court. It was an honor to participate, and this is the second year of this festivity. This was first initially hosted by our Chief Judge, Judge Flanagan. It was one of his crowning, or what I would say, one of his focal points for the Second Judicial Court, and it was in true honor that it went off without a hitch yesterday, I mean, last week. And it was wonderful. I was attended by Governor Sandoval, Supreme Court Justice Lydia Stiglitz was there, Reno City Councilwoman Naomi Duer was there. And then, we also had Judge Flanagan's widow was also there, and she was there, and so he was with us in spirit, and that was great. And it was presided over by Chief Judge Freeman. It was wonderful to hear the poems that the kids wrote in response to their patriotism and love for our flag and love for our country, which was really neat to listen to. So many young children from all different schools write wonderful poems, and they were all picked. And so, if you get an opportunity, please stop by the Second Judicial Court. You can see some of these wonderful poems that these kids wrote and different things like that. But the other big part was, you know, honoring our service members. We had the honor guard from there doing the colors. We had veterans show up. So, it was a wonderful celebration, something that I really look forward to every year. And it was an honor to participate and speak. Last but not least, it is Reno Rodeo Week. For all those out there, if you hadn't had a chance to get out to the Reno Rodeo, it is one of our legacy events here in Washoe County. We look forward to it every year. Every year, it gets bigger and bigger, and every year, it gets more fun and enjoyable. A big round of applause to all of those folks over at the Reno Rodeo, putting this event together, from the cattle drive to the parade, to the 10-day event and putting this on. It's amazing what they do, and you know, all the volunteers that help out over there are tremendous. So, big, big round of applause for them. If you get an opportunity, please go and see it. But also, I want to thank all the Washoe County staff that work here at the county complex. This week is always a challenge for all those individuals that are coming to park and work during, or trying to leave work during, while people are coming here for the rodeo that night. So, please be patient for the staff members. It'll be over by the end of Saturday. But for all those of you who haven't got out and seen it, please do get your tickets and come down to the Reno Rodeo. It'll be a nice experience for you and the family. So, of that, that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. Vice Chair Jung.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I have a few announcements. On Sunday, I celebrated the end of Ramadan for Eid for the Northern Nevada Muslim Association out at Lazy Five in Spanish Springs. I will also Thursday be going with staff down to Vegas to tour the Clark County Jail and see the provider of medical NAF care and sort of if it's any different than what we're experiencing up here. And I'm also going to the senior services, a tour of their senior services. Friday, I will be at Dog Tales Canine Rehabilitation Center and Sanctuary Fundraiser. And those are great partners with our Humane Society for canines that need to be rehabbed, either socially or physically. Then I, hang on a second. I'll let Commissioner Burke Bigler talk about Incline Village and voting irregularities. The only thing that I would ask is, it would have been great to know that during it, so that we could have solved it then, but we certainly will look fully into that, and I'm sorry you experienced that. That should never happen in this country. I asked at the last meeting, but I'm going to do it again here, Mr. Manager. I want to know how we can create a database for Washoe County. Really, it should be statewide. Whenever the Narcan or naloxone is used by our emergency responders, that is not getting recorded. So, again, our data is flawed, weak, you know, unattainable. There's no way I can work on this task force if I don't have all my data. So, if we can look in that, that probably needs to be done statewide. But definitely with the Sheriff's Office and TMFPD, we can direct that that gets collected, but it really needs to be bigger than that. And then, I really think that we need to pick up our media training in terms of directing the media, when they're losing their head all over social media, to be looking at Twitter, because that's where all of our breaking news is for you. That's where all of the information is. People can't be on the phone fielding phone calls in an emergency, because we just frankly don't have the staff for that. So, media should be looking at Twitter, not citizens. Citizens, we have lots of other ways we can outreach to you, but the media really needs to know that that's our standard operating procedure, and we need to roll that out and do a big training again. I know we tried, we did it with Truckee Meadows Fire once with a press conference, but let's do it more robust and completely to all of our resources that are looking for information. And then, finally, Mr. Manager, can I have a report of all the dams in Washoe County, both public and private? Because I wasn't even aware there was a dam at Washoe Lake, so. And so, if you could, we just need a list and a map and identify who's responsible. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. Anything else, commissioners? Anything? Okay. I have a couple of things. One is the three members of us who serve on the Regional Governing Board. We were at the Governing Board meeting. It was nice to see that it actually was held here in the chambers. Nice to see that the master plan is moving forward. I think we're in a positive step, and so, we're hopefully going to have in October, hopefully in October, we'll have it in final draft form. And it will probably be approved in March of next year, but it truly is an upgrade of the plan that is going to be addressing the issues of growth in this community, which we obviously need and have needed for some time. So, that was a good meeting. I was honored to attend Washoe County's Employees Appreciation Day at the Aces Baseball Stadium, and I got to throw out the first pitch. And you'll all be happy to know I didn't embarrass anybody. It was great. My husband was a second baseman, and I'm convinced he was hanging on to the ball as it was going right straight. It was terrific, anyway. So, I didn't embarrass you and Washoe County employees. I hope you're all happy about that. And yesterday, I had a meeting with CATT, which is the Contractors Association of Truckee and Tahoe. And they were, they're concerned about the requirement, about getting a language in the law, and I believe this has to go to the legislature. So, this might be something that we want to bring Jamie in on. They're concerned about getting language in the law that would allow for a second home to be built on a property. So, in other words, if you've got a house in the front and you don't have a full acre, you want to put a tiny home behind. Their argument is that it will help with the housing situation we're having. I'm not sure that that's ever going to be the case in Incline Village, but that certainly is a possibility for the, for Washoe County and the valley, because it is an issue that we are dealing with, the homeless situation, the not, the people who have jobs and still can't get into homes, that's a problem. And so, it is something we might want to look at. And so, I would ask, Mr. Manager, if we could have staff take a look at that and let, give us a report back on what would have to be done to fully address that issue as a possibility. And they also, yeah, they also asked that there is apparently an ongoing meeting called the Mountain Housing Council of Tahoe Truckee, and they asked if Washoe County staff could look at attending that meeting. So, I've got the clippings on it, and I will provide it to you, Mr. Manager, and if we could. I'm not sure how beneficial it is to us in the overall greater scheme of things, but it's probably beneficial to at least get some information on what's going on with housing in the basin and how it will impact us here in the valley. So, those are the things I've had. I have anything else, commissioners? All right, we will close item six and move on. Mr. Manager.
Item seven is an appearance, and if we could, maybe we'll just open both items seven and eight.
Okay.
Because it's the same staff presenting these. So, item seven is appears by Deanna Specula, Registrar of Voters. This is an item that the board had requested previously, Presentation on Election Administration. And then, that'll be followed by item eight, which is the Declaration of Canvas of the Vote and Order for 2018 Primary Election per NRS 293.387.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Good morning.
How are you?
My name is Deanna Specula. I am the Registrar of Voters, and I'm just here to present an overview of my department and what it is that we do for the county. Our, this is actually the wrong, this is the other presentation, the second one. Start's off the same.
Deanna, if you want to go ahead and start.
Okay. We'll go ahead and we'll catch up. I guess, the mission of the Washoe County Registrar of Voters Department is to ensure that each citizen of Washoe County who is eligible to register to vote is able to do so, that Washoe County's elections are operated with the utmost integrity, transparency, and accountability, and that the department is known for excellence in customer service and election administration. The key to fulfilling our mission is that transparency in what we do, that our processes are known and understood by all, so we can instill confidence in our elections and how we are conducting our elections in Washoe County. There are two main functions that our office oversees. The first is voter registration, and the second is election administration. We have six full-time staff members, including myself, and we currently have over 257,000 registered voters in Washoe County. And of course, election administration, that is the most public and visible side of what it is that we do. Most of what we do is run by federal and state law. Running an election, it takes detailed planning, coordination, managing timelines and those hard deadlines, and maintaining equipment and supplies, and a lot, and a lot, a lot of people. We have a lot of people that contribute to our elections here. In about November, December of the year prior, we begin polling place coordination, and we actually begin early voting and election day poll worker recruitment at that time. In January, we have judicial filing, and then in March, we have nonjudicial filing. After that, March and April, we're doing ballot setup and we're proofing everything, and we're contracting with our key vendors to help us provide election services. In April, we do our sample ballot preparation and printing, and our first absentee ballots begin to go out for a primary election. Those are for our UOCVA voters, which are our military and overseas voters. Those go out 45 days prior to an election. The next set of ballots that do go out are our out-of-state residents, or people who are going to be out of state for the election, and those go out 40 days prior to an election. And the rest of the absentee ballots are mailed out approximately 30 days before the election. And in May, we're doing our pre-lat, which is our pre-logic and accuracy testing, and we are doing logistics for our moving services, so that our, all of our election equipment can get to their polls, polling places for early voting and election day. This is all done while we're still maintaining that voter registration database, and voter registration now goes up until two days before early voting begins. In 2017, the Board of County Commissioners approved the purchase of new voting equipment. The total purchase price was $4.2 million, and the state appropriated funds to help us assist the funding as a reimbursement of $1.7 million. Our new voting tablets are the next generation of our voting equipment. It is less costly and more secure and uses technology that most people are familiar with, that touchscreen voting tablet. Like our old equipment, our ICX Primes are standalone units and are not connected to any network or any Wi-Fi. Also, our tally system is hosted on an isolated server, and again, does not network out or have any Wi-Fi capability during election cycle. We also now have four points of redundancy that we rely on to ensure the integrity of our elections. We have a primary flash drive, a backup flash drive, the internal memory, and of course, what everybody knows as our, what we call a VVPAT, which is our voter verified paper audit trail. And again, we use that VVPAT to conduct our post-election audits. And also, an additional security is our USB thumb drives are now encrypted memory devices for enhanced security. Another important point with our voting tablets and our poll books, they never share data. Our poll books are simply a means to check a voter in. They do not retain any election information whatsoever. They're only used to, again, check a voter in. They basically burn their voter card to be used in our ICX Primes. And then, again, those are what helps us post-election history to our voter registration records. Again, it only retains the information that you appeared to vote, not how you voted, and how a person votes is always confidential and is never known. Another thing most people want to know are the requirements for the election equipment that must be met. We only use equipment that is certified by the state, and this must meet or exceed federal standards. Our direct recording device voting equipment is required to have that voter verified paper audit trail as well. We must also verify and certify that we're using the proof software infirmar prior to each election, and our certification board is also appointed, and it's our accuracy certification board, and they play a very important oversight role for our elections. Our current members for this election cycle were Greg Newwiler, Jean Stose, Norman Shift, and Steve Davidek. And again, they will, I'm sure one of them will want to come up and talk to you about that post-election process that we go through to verify that votes cast are the true and accurate votes cast in our tally system. Again, election night tally process, there's been some questions about how we proceed through election night tallying. The first thing is that we cannot release any unofficial results until all polls are closed across the state, and the Secretary of State's office notifies us that we can start releasing unofficial results. We can begin processing absentee ballots before the election. We have four days prior to begin opening and prepping them for tally, but we do not tally any actual results until after all polls have closed, and we've been notified by the Secretary of State's office that we can begin processing and releasing results. That is something that we are very adamant about, that we do not produce any results before that release by the Secretary of State's office, that we're allowed to start tallying and releasing results. So, the first votes that we tally on election night are our early voting results. At the end of the close of polls for early voting, all of those early voting workers come and they bring those election results back to our office with their VVPAT, which is the voter verified paper audit trail tapes, and we lock them in a secure location until election night. Again, we don't receive any tally or election results electronically. They all have to physically be brought into our office for tally. And so, those first unofficial results that we do release on election night are our early voting results. And as polling locations report in on election night is when we start uploading those results, and then, we periodically release updated unofficial results throughout the night. Again, those drives must be brought to us physically. We do not tally anything electronically. It comes into our office, and we do that on our isolated server at our election central, is what we call our office. Once all the election day and early voting polling places have been uploaded, we do then upload our absentee ballots. Those are our final ones, and the absentee ballots contain the absentee ballots and our mail-in voters. All of those ballots get tallied at the end, and that brings us to 100% of results. Again, those, these results do not become official until after the canvass of the votes by the Board of County Commissioners, and at that point, we do our full statement of votes cast by precinct, and we release those unofficial, I'm sorry, those official results, and they are deemed finalized. And of course, once again, transparency in what we do is most important, and we do allow observers to observe every part of the process that we go through. They can observe our pre-logic and accuracy testing. They can observe us at the polling location. They can come into our office and observe tally on election night. Anytime an observer or somebody from the public would like to observe what we're doing, they are welcome and allowed to do so. Again, we're going into something that has been a hot topic around the nation is election infrastructure and cybersecurity. In order for us to fulfill that mission that we have, elections security and cybersecurity is a very critical component of what we do. It's not only important for Washoe County as a whole, but also important to election infrastructure. Our office and support staff have a solid foundation on security topics, and we're in discussions and trainings on election security and which are ongoing. We belong to many organizations that give us access to resources such as newsletter information sharing, webinars, best practices, and other election-related resources. We kind of view our process to election security in three areas. We have physical, procedural, and cyber. Some of the physical features are, for example, our decentralized system, that our voting tablets are standalone, and we tally on an isolated server. We have no Wi-Fi or network connectivity on our voting or tally equipment. Again, we use equipment, barcoding, tamper evidence seals, and other security devices which are used and are logged and verified by us and our poll workers throughout the election cycle. Some of the procedural features that we use, our office conforms to the Washoe County security policy. We perform audits and monitor before and after each election, and our certification board also participates and verifies our post and pre-election audits. We also have backups, redundancies, and emergency plans which are in place to have a quick remediation of any failures or incidences that we may encounter. We also perform system maintenance, monitoring, and reviews, and report, and watch for any anomalies or suspicious activities or behaviors. The final component is our cyber. Election equipment uses security credentials and authentication that's authorized by NIST, which is the National Institute of Standards and Technology, and this is the improved encryption and decryption that we use on our election tally software. Washoe County also maintains a well-trained and certified cybersecurity team, which uses modern technologies and procedures to help to protect Washoe County's infrastructure from common cyber threats. And also, again, monitoring, auditing, response, and remediation, both in-house and as well with our trusted security partners are an important part of our initiatives for cybersecurity. Again, we are aware and act vigilantly to ensure the integrity of our elections and our election infrastructure. And I guess, any questions on those points before we lead into the canvas?
Thank you, Ms. Specula. I see that I have Commissioner Hartong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Specula, I have a question on, it's actually, they weren't showing, but it's on your slide 16 with respect to observers. And there's been a question about a polling place in Incline Village. Were there any observers in Incline Village?
I was, not that I'm aware of, no.
We had no observers up there?
Not official observers that checked in with our polling manager, and yeah, no, not in the official observer capacity that I'm aware of.
That's unfortunate. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I mean, I did, I can say that we did have our accuracy certification board actually visited that site many times. So, it was something that our internal auditors went through and actually visited that location. But as far as citizen observers, none actually checked in that I'm aware of.
Okay. And I'm talking about just behavior and in terms of how things were conducted, not our polling process itself. It's the, you know, it's the way it was conducted.
Again, I had our, a few members from our, actually two, I believe, went up and observed the polling location, which is what they do during early voting and Election Day for us. They actually go out and visit sites, they talk to poll workers, and they kind of observe the overall conduct of the election. And I do know that they did visit that site for early voting.
But they weren't there the entire time, that's the question.
The entire time, no.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartong. Well, with relative to Incline Village, I want to thank you for stepping in and pulling the person that we were concerned about. And, you know, it's one of those things that, as I said, I quoted a line from a movie, "When you hear something once, you know you kind of discount it." But when you get phone calls from three, or four, or five people saying, "This is going on, and it's clearly voter fraud," you have to step in and do something. And so, I would request that, because Incline Village is a unique place, so I would request that we find a different location for the early voting when we go into the general. If we can go back to the library, that would be perfect. But we definitely need to have them in a place that people who are sitting in the deli or who are shopping through Rayleigh's, and I spend a fair amount of time up in that community, so I understand this community well, cannot see what, who people are voting for, because you have a right to vote for who you want to vote for without having somebody looking over your shoulder. And frankly, that was an ongoing problem in this community. I was there one day and took the opportunity to go in and see it, and I could stand back in Rayleigh's and see who everybody was voting for, and that's just inappropriate. And so, I would ask that we make sure that we do something better in Incline Village. And I'd also ask that, I know it's totally legal for an elected official who's not on the ballot, you're just a citizen like anybody else, and I understand it's totally legal. I personally would not do that because it's my own personal belief, but I would ask that in Incline Village particularly, we need to be very much more careful about who is our poll manager. And on a going-forward basis, I would like to see that we bring somebody from Reno to go up there and sit in there, because they have no vested interest in what's going on in that community. And I think that's a much better approach. And then, we don't have citizens, this may have all been totally innocent. I know that there are two people sitting in this room who've already testified, who do not believe that there was any innocence here, but in fairness, this may have been totally innocent, but it still created the perception that we were allowing voter fraud to go on. And so, that's really, from the perspective of my constituents up there, who I've heard from a great deal, that we are more careful what we do in the Incline Village area. And there may be other areas that that's the case. I don't know that. I haven't heard from any other areas, but there are other small communities that are, that might be a problem. And so, we just, it's probably something we really need from a security and of your voting rights, we probably need to be a little more careful in what we do, so. But I do want to tell you again how much I appreciate you stepping in immediately and making sure that the problem was taken care of and addressed, so that we felt like our citizens could go up there and vote, so I appreciate that. One of the things that's come out of the Supreme Court is purging voting data, registrators. And I saw something in the newspaper, a registered voters, I can get that out, I can. I saw something in the newspaper that said Nevada's going to take a broader look at it. Do you think that's something that's going to be done in the legislature to see how we purge, and if we're doing it correctly, if we're making certain that we're not purging names of people who want to vote? But you really do have to vote in order to be on the voting rolls. I mean, you can't just vote once in 50 years and expect to always be on the voter rolls. And so, do you know how that's going to be addressed? Have you guys had a chance to talk about that yet?
Not on a statewide basis. We do have a conference coming up in July, which will be going to a conference with the Secretary of State's office, and I'm sure this will be one of the topics that they will bring up. As you guys know, federal mandate, you know, there's a federal mandate saying that we have to keep our voter registration rolls current and accurate, and how we go about that is mostly laid out in either the Help America Vote Act or in state statutes. So, that's pretty much what we follow. Whether or not there will be any changes to that or any different approach that might be addressed in legislative session, I have no knowledge of any of that moving forward at this point. Again, we want to maintain our voter registration rolls, and we always reach out to those voters. We send them notices, and we try to get that response from them. We, you know, we want to keep people on the rolls, we want them voting. That is kind of pretty much what our office does, is we facilitate voter registration and elections for the county. We don't want to necessarily remove anybody, but we do want to keep our rolls accurate and maintain that integrity as well. So, how we go about doing that, again, will work. We work with the state, and we work with every county clerk in the state of Nevada, and we'll be, I'm sure they'll bring up some more information for us at our July conference, and I'll be happy to share that with you at that time, if there's anything that they bring up in regards to basically maintaining our voter registration rolls.
Okay, so, one other issue. Could you explain to us what the law isn't related to requesting IDs from people who come to vote? I had several people come and report to me that they were asked for their, to show their ID when they got to the polling station.
So, there's a few instances where somebody might be asked for ID. One would be if they are a brand-new registrant in the state of Nevada and their identification has not been yet verified. When they go to the polls, they will be flagged as somebody who needs to provide ID to continue voting for the first time in Nevada. Other people that might be asked, it could be that their signature is miscompares, or it's actually in statute that if you surrender your absentee ballot, you're required to show that identification as well. Those are basically the three main instances where somebody might be asked for ID. Again, there's other remedies. We have voter registration record information that we can verify verbally with the voters, so there are other options. But again, those are the three main ones where somebody might be asked for that ID.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Hartong?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I neglected to ask, Ms. Specula, I know a couple of years ago, and we were blessed to be able to put this through, what's happened with our paperless sample ballots, where people sign up?
People are still signing up. We have got to find a better way to transmit those.
Yes.
At this time, it's a manual process, which is very time-consuming. So, that's something I have on my list of things that I want to work with our Technology Services Department on implementing something that's a better seamless process for those incoming requests to be, to have that paperless sample ballot, and then us processing and getting that information out to those voters when the time is appropriate. Again, right now, it's still a very manual process, and we do, we have, I want to say around 1,200 people who have opted out or opted in to receiving their sample ballot electronically. But again, we'd like to see that number go up, because of course, that is a humongous cost savings to the county that we're not printing things that people don't want to receive by mail or on paper. So, anytime that we can encourage people to help us reduce those costs, we welcome it. But we definitely have to design a better process, both on the requesting side and then on the facilitation of that sample ballot to our voters.
I'm surprised that there's not a piece of software out there, an app, as it were, that, you know.
I'm sure there's something that we can, yeah.
Yeah. That could really assist us. Yeah, that, it could be, it could be a huge boon for us. I mean, ultimately, and I know that there's a lot of people that cringe at this, but ultimately, I'd love to see paperless sample ballots, because you can get them in any language that you desire. Doesn't make any difference.
Yeah. There's definitely some benefits to it, and people are now used to the technology, and most people do have apps for almost about everything.
Of course.
So, it would definitely be something, like I said, I will follow up with Technology Services and see what we can come up with, and hopefully, we can provide a better product for our voters.
I look forward to it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartong. Vice Chair Jung.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I agree with you with the volunteers being reassigned. I think you should look at all the volunteers and put them not in their precinct or not in the area that they could influence the vote in any way. And I'll just give you a good story about that. My mother has been a volunteer at the polls for decades, both where I grew up in California and then here. And the moment I got into office, I said, "You're not working anymore with the Register of Voters, because I don't think it looks right." So, and to take that one step further, let's take people out of their precincts and have them go someplace else. I know that's a little bit more of a logistic nightmare, but it also does preserve the transparency and the validity of the vote for the people. I do think that we need to do a whole lot more at pushing turnout. I think our turnout is frankly embarrassing, and we need to work with some nonprofit or agency that pushes out the vote for the next time around. And then, I would be remiss, our communications team did a fabulous job on voting night when we can, going live on the channel. You know, we, as candidates, can't be down here, you know, strolling around, it's inappropriate looking, but it felt like I was down here strolling around, because I got to watch you live. And then, I have to tell you what my husband said about you. You did so great with all these live shots, and you're so very knowledgeable, but he also said, "She looks like a movie star." So, you did, you represented us perfectly, and I appreciate you and all your hard work, and I'm sure you and your staff are a big sigh of relief in just getting geared up for the big general. So, thank you so much. You did a great job, and I agree with my husband, you looked like a movie star.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. Anything else from the commissioners? Okay, we'll move on to eight, so take it away.
So, I think this is the right PowerPoint, if we have that.
Can we get the, aha?
There we go. Okay, so, again, I'm here to provide an overview of the 2018 primary election that was held on June 12th. And, let's get this moving forward here. Okay, so, for this election, we had approximately 257,000 registered voters, and we still, up in here in Washoe County, we have, we still have more Republicans registered. The nonpartisans are actually a larger portion now of what we see on our voter registration rolls, and then the Democratic Party also has a significant showing up in here in Washoe. So, we are kind of a mixed bag up here. We have a little bit of everybody represented on our voter registration rolls. Turnout, I felt, actually, for a primary, the 26.9% turnout for a primary is actually the largest we've had since 2010. There's a lot of things that probably contributed to that, such as some big offices that were primaring, and also, I think, some of our voter outreach, our communications team did do a phenomenal job. They, before the election and everything, they took every opportunity they could to push that message out that we were having an election and that people should show up and vote, because those primaries do matter. They helped us, I think tremendously, gain at least a little bit of a percentage up from where we were from at least 2010. Again, the 26.9% was actually a big number that we haven't seen since that election in 2010. Total, again, another kind of unusual thing, there's actually more people who showed up to vote on Election Day as opposed to early voting. The trend has been that early voting has been a larger percentage, but this time, we saw Election Day voting be more popular this time. And again, with our absentee and mail-in voters, we definitely had a bigger response than we were anticipating. A primary usually only, we get about 3,500 back, we got over 5,000. So, again, that was another uptick that we're actually pretty happy about. Our equipment, so, out of our new equipment, we purchased 1,325 units of the new voting equipment. For this election, we used 981, and that, and 417 poll workers were hired. So, out of our polling locations, we had 20 early voting and 79 Election Day locations. Again, our early voting, we had 20 locations with over 1,900 hours of operation. I know that we've talked about the Incline Railies and places like that. The one thing about using the libraries is sometimes they're closed on certain days, and so that gives them more hours if we're at the Railies, but then again, if it's other topics, other voter privacy, other issues that are in play, and that's what the citizens up in that area want, we definitely will consider it. We want them to be, I mean, they're telling us what to do. So, we're going to respond to that, and we're going to vet that and see if we can move back or at least provide some other, so if Railies can give us a different room or a different space. There's other options, but of course, we'll do what the voters want us to do. That's what we're here to do. So, we want to make them sure that they're comfortable in voting in the place that they want to be voting at and in the environment that they're comfortable with. So, Election Day, we had 79 election locations, 79 Election Day locations, and again, 329 poll workers hired. It was actually fewer than we've hired in the past, because we have that intake and roster station now combined. So, we're getting a little bit of savings there as far as having one stop where voters basically process on Election Day like they do with early voting. I think it's, from the feedback that we've heard from our office, voters and poll workers overwhelmingly responded very positively to these new changes. Again, absentee ballots, we issued over 7,000 and had over 5,000 returned, which is very unusual for a primary election. So, again, we see that people were engaged and were interested in voting in this primary. Our county workers, they are one of our best resources. We had 30 county poll workers plus one Trekkie Meadows Water Authority poll worker. For this election, our Technology Services Department is unprecedented, the support that they gave us. They really reached out, they knew that we had new equipment, and all the acceptance testing and all the processes that we have to do before an election, they stepped up and supported it. up and supported us. And we also had four county employees who worked in our call center, and also, we had a few of the Technology Services Department people working in our office, walking people through over the phone, kind of doing a call center help as well. Again, thank you to that department, everybody who participated, which is, on the next slide, I have all the names listed and what they participated in. Again, an unprecedented support from our Technologies Services Department, and we appreciate it so much. I don't think we could have done it without them. So post-election activity. So we did a post-LAT, which is a post-logic and accuracy testing, and we completed that on Wednesday, and we found no errors. Our provisional ballots have been processed. We had five provisional ballots that were casted out of 14 that were submitted. The main reason a provisional ballot would not be accepted is that person is not registered to vote in our district. Everyone else who voted that provisional ballot, it was counted and it was tallied, and it is in that abstract of votes cast that you guys received this morning. Reconciliation was completed, so we do a check between the labels that were printed at the polling locations and the reports of how many voters appeared at those locations against what the poll workers tallied on each machine that they give us. We reconcile that those match, and we had no unexplained errors. Our final abstract has been printed and has been distributed, and our vote history will be posted. And again, our post-election audit, we completed on Friday the 15th, and that was by our Accuracy Certification Board, and our current members are Greg Newwiler, Jean Stos, Steve Davidek, and Norman Schiff. And this is where I think Greg might want to come up and address any issues or any questions that you guys may have over the VPAT audit that we do.
Mr. Newwiler, welcome.
Welcome. For the record, I'm Greg Newwiler. I'm the chair of the Certification Board. It's nice to see all of you. And the Certification Team has been introduced with Norm being our new member. He's been a poll manager for several dozen elections, so he came in to help us and has a ton of knowledge, and we welcome him very much. We operate under two NRS statutes for our audit on Friday. The first one comes from NAC 293B.120. It says, "For a county with a population of 100,000 or more, shall select a number of mechanical recording devices that has at least 2%." And if you take, we rounded it up to 1,000 primes being used. Deanna gave you the right number. So we chose 22 precincts to audit. After, when we get those selected, the next NRS statute we work with is NAC 293B.100, which says that we will select randomly two barcodes from each paper ballot printed, or paper roll printed. We do that, too. We also date stamp and sign everything we look at, so in case there's an audit, we know exactly who worked on that particular vote count. Dominion was very good about providing all of the technical support for Election Day. They didn't provide any technical support for how to run an audit. So we had Brian Takamoto and, oh my God, I forgot, Dan Simpson's in there Friday when we did the audit, because the previous system had one barcode per voter. The new system has three QR codes per voter. So they had to design a new system for us in order to be able to read every one of those votes. Again, at the end of this process, I'm very proud to report that in Washoe County, we did not lose a single vote, not one. We accounted for everything on the machines, everything on the V-PATS, everything on the thumb drives. So that's a perfect record since 2000. Do you have any questions? Again, you're welcome to come in and watch it. We do have the jurors come in, and we will put you to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I included the list of machines that they audited and the locations where those machines were found. All right. All right, some of the areas with some issues that were brought to our office during the election cycle, again, fled voters is something that we've always had. These are when people go to the voting machines and initialize their voting session but do not complete it. Honestly, I do not know why this occurs. It's always happened. It's happened with our previous equipment and our new equipment, and our poll workers have a way of, they have instructions on how to proceed once that is discovered. It looks a little different than it used to. Now there's an actual mirror message on the machine where before, it would just be a, you know, the vote would just be still sitting there in the queue. So we're working with, of course, our poll workers and our vendor, and we want to look at seeing if we can get, I believe Clark County has a light that displays on the machine. It's something that's actually above the machine, and it's like a red light that will, I think it flashes, a green light if the machine's okay, a red light if something needs attention. We are definitely going to look at that and work with our vendor to get something similar because we want our poll workers and our voters to have that also. We want to give them as many opportunities to rectify something that's an error as we can. And of course, a red flashing light would be a clear cue that something needs to be, needs attention at that voting machine. We had reports, we had six reports of a ballot display issue. I personally talked to four people. There's two I've sent, I've made phone calls to but have not heard back from them regarding this issue. Again, I want to make sure that we're vetting any reports that we have received, and again, that stems from improper display size on the, on the screen, so that some, so if it was a longer ballot, that not all the names were apparent on the one screen, they had to toggle the font size to actually see the entire full list on that, that race. Again, that's something we're working with our vendor. We're going to, we're going to do an audit after the election. We definitely want, we want this to be rectified just as much as everybody else does. What we do and the integrity of our elections is extremely important to Washoe County and to my office, and we want to make sure that we are providing that best service that we can. So we will be following up with our vendor on this, and we will follow any other reports that may come in. Again, as far as the six reports that we have received on Election Day, those six people still were able to successfully cast their ballots on Election Day. Nobody was turned away, and nobody was not able to vote their full ballot with this issue. So again, it was able to be rectified at the polling location either by a poll worker or by the individual themselves. And so we, again, we were going to, we're looking, going to look into it, we're going to follow it up, but we believe that every single vote that was intended to be cast was cast successfully by those voters. Enhancing voter privacy, it was something that was brought up, you know, consistently, especially through early voting. Early voting is, most of those locations have a smaller space that's allotted to them by the location, so it's definitely, it's a tighter squeeze in most of those places. We like our partners with railies and other grocery stores or any other place where people go to shop. That is so convenient for early voters to be able to go to those locations, but we have got to try to figure out a way to ensure that the voters feel like their vote is private, that they have that secrecy of their ballot. And so we've looked into either a different setup at the polling location, or we're looking at different products that may cover the vote, voting area more sufficiently than what's been provided for this election. So again, that's something that's on our horizons and something that we'll be looking into for the general election, and we will definitely have something that we'll implement by then. Again, new equipment, for basically us going into an election with brand-new equipment, I think everything went very well. Our voters and our poll workers all overwhelmingly responded positively to the new equipment, and I believe that, again, we have some areas where we're getting that feedback from our voters and from our poll workers. We're going to incorporate that into additional trainings. I know a lot of them wanted more hands-on training. We can provide that. We have the resources to be able to do that, to have them be able to come in, and they can spend as much time as they want with our new equipment, and they can touch it, open it, you know, play with the different features. We want them to have that experience. So we're looking into enhancing their online, or their, all their online training as well, but their training manuals and their in-person training sessions. So that's something that we're looking at for the, to implement for the general election as well. And sample ballots, it doesn't seem like we can ever fully make everybody happy with our sample ballots, but, you know, the format that it's in now was basically decided upon quite a few years ago, and it was based on cost savings. However, it's cost savings versus the support that this sample ballot is for our citizens. We've got to weigh that, and we've got to look at that and come up with something better. If our citizens want something that's more informative and it's a better fit for them, we're going to go look at that. Again, I think the cost savings, I think there are no now other alternatives that we can look at, so I'll be working with some other vendors and looking to see what we can do to enhance that sample ballot for our voters so they're getting the product that they need to help assist them through their, through voting on Election Day or early So what do we got coming up next? There is a petition, it's a Renewable Energy Promotion Initiative, and I believe it's supposed to be dropped off today. So as soon as we get that, we will actually start doing the process of petition verification of signatures for that ballot initiative. Again, as I talked kind of a little bit before, as a post-election poll worker surveys and our voter feedback, we're going to start reviewing that stuff and start looking at what we can implement and what we can do to address those concerns and the things that people would like to see happen out in our elections, both the poll worker side and for our voters. And then, of course, we're going to start gearing up for the next election. Believe it or not, it's really not that far away as far as election preparation is concerned. So we have our general election, that's November 6th, and we're going to start prepping for that basically tomorrow. So last thing I think I have here is our staff, staff introductions, and if you guys could stand up when I call your name. Well, of course, you met our Accuracy Certification Board. We have Greg Newwiler, and then in our audience, we have Jean Stos and Norman Schiff, who everyone knows. Thank you. And again, they provide a wonderful service to the county participating in the Accuracy Certification Board. They definitely, they're watching what we're doing, and they're kind of the, they keep us in line, I like to think. And then in my internal office, we have Heather Carmen. She's the new assistant registrar. Got to stand up. Yeah, okay. She supports our entire office while still maintaining her regular workload as well. She is the go-to person for basically everything, and everyone goes to her to resolve their questions. It, like I said, it doesn't matter what it is. If somebody needs an answer, they go to Heather for it. There's not one area of this office that she does not have a hand in supporting. And then I have Kate Saleem. Kate is our Equipment Supply Center and Polling Place Coordinator, and this election, she managed the task of receiving all of our new election equipment, and that includes not just the machines themselves, but all the, you know, accessories that go with them, plus all the poll books. And she also had to go through and also order all the regular supplies that we do, order for an election, like the seals, all the forms, I mean, everything. She had a humongous task for going through this before an election, and she handled it superbly and very happy and glad that she didn't quit on me, but yeah. My next person is Sarah War. She's been with our office. She was a temporary employee before, and we hired her on full-time. She now administers our absentee ballots, and she also maintains our precinct, district, and street boundaries. Sarah, again, once she, we had more ballots issued than we were expecting for a primary. She was able to ensure that all of them got issued, all the ones that were returned were processed and ready to be tallied at 7:00 PM on Election Night. That was one of our goals, is to make sure that all those ballots, those absentee ballots were in, so that on Election Night, all we were waiting for was that last polling location to come in, and then we could tally and finish up the night, and we, we were trying to beat Clark County. That's kind of our goal every year, and we did. So I'm proud to say that. Thank you. John Brown, he's one of our newer employees as well. He is now working on our, I'm sorry, our poll worker recruiter, and he's doing the poll worker training now. This is a new area for him. He's actually worked with poll workers and poll worker training before, but this is the first time that he's been responsible for basically managing the whole process end to end. He's, you know, you're taking on managing over 400 poll workers and also supporting them out in the field on, for early voting and on Election Day. It's, it's a huge job as well. And then Will Thompson, he was our front desk and correspondence coordinator, and this is basically one of the positions in our office that never ends. There is always new information, new applications coming in, customer service, people calling, doing all the correspondence when we're sending letters and notifications out to our voters. That's all through Will. That's, again, another monumental task, especially how they handled with him and the staff that we had brought on to help us with phone calls. Just that alone was a huge task, and he also maintained the rest of that, the voter registration side. And again, we do that up through two days before early voting starts. So again, I thank all of them for what they did. And Brian Takamoto, I think everybody knows Brian. He's responsible, I say he's responsible for everything in our office. If it has a plug or a battery, he's on top of it. Even if it's not in his area, he will find a way, he will never say no to us. Whenever we ask whatever insane, insane requests that we ask of him, he makes it happen. I couldn't be happier to have, happier than I am with what he does and how he supports our office. He's such an incredible resource, and he can never retire. I've told him that. He can't retire. And then, our newest person was Dan Simpson. We got Dan. He was, basically, he was on loan to us, and I hope he can come back for the general election from Technology Services. Again, he, he's our newest member of our team, and he stepped right in, a tremendous resource, and I think he helped keep Brian from completely collapsing on us because we had more on our plate this election with all the new equipment. So again, again, I hope he comes back for the general election. He seemed to manage just fine, and he fit in really well with our staff, so I'd like to have him back, and I thank him as well. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right, and my last thanks again to Technology Services. They provided that unprecedented support that we, you know, more than we could have asked for, and I appreciate their help so much because I really don't think we could have done everything we did without them. Our county volunteers, all of our poll workers, even the ones out in the field, but also the ones that helped us in our call center. Again, a tremendous resource, and we're so thankful that they came and helped us. Election Day poll workers, that's a really long day, and they do it time and time again, and same with our early voting workers. They endure, endure two weeks, I mean, two straight weeks of early voting, and they do it with a smile, and they keep coming back. So we really appreciate and want to thank them for their hard work out there as well. Again, there's more, more departments that actually assisted our office. Again, the communications team, never had so much support from them, and they helped wrangle in some of the chaotic questions that happen on Election Day and through early voting. And then the managers' office also, again, helped us with various things, giving out cookies on Election Night, which our poll workers demand now because he's in us. So we really appreciate their support as well. And of course, to all of our voters who turned out, again, 26.9%, I'm very happy with that. We'd like to see more, but again, that's more than we've had since 2010, so I'm very happy to see our turnout is increasing for primaries, and we're going to work with all of our partners to hopefully get that number up, and we'd like to see a better turnout for the, well, of course, for the general election, but for the 2020 primary as well. So, all right, that is all I have at the moment. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Spicula, and perhaps I've just missed it, I don't watch Washoe TV terribly often, but do we have instructions? And by the way, let me preface this with saying, I found the voting machines to be intuitive. They were fairly easy to use. I didn't, I didn't see any hiccups with them at all. It was a, it was a pretty slick and clean process, and it didn't take my wife and I long. In fact, we voted early the first day that our polls opened, but it wasn't the first day that they opened because the library wasn't open the first day. But that's, that's neither here nor there. But do we have, do we have instructions on Washoe TV on how to do it and to make sure that we don't have fled voters?
So the, actually, we have worked with the, our communications team with providing some videos. I'm not sure they have one that basically goes through the entire functions of going through your voting session yet, but we can, it's something we can do.
And, and I, and the other thing that I might suggest is, you know, put it on, put it online, YouTube, where you can just pull it up at any time, and, and even give that information to 311 or to, of course, the registrar's staff, where, look, if you've got a question, you can, you can watch this simple video. It really is easier than you might begin to imagine, but, and I got no one, I mean, I read some things in the newspaper that... But, and I got no one, I mean, I read some things in the newspaper that said that there was some, a couple of people with some issues, but I, I just, I thought it was, I thought it was very, very simple.
Yeah. Again, we had over 69,000 people vote, and, you know, really, the number of people that we had call into our office with something, an issue of some sort, it was very small, a very small percentage. So, again, with the new equipment and the learning curve and everything else, I think things went very smoothly. And again, every voter that we know of that wanted to cast a ballot was able to do so out there.
And I know Mr. Newwiler brought up Dominion. That's the maker of the machine, correct?
Yes. Dominion voting is our vendor.
Dominion voting is the vendor, right. And then, this is not for you, but it's either for Mr. Manager or for counsel, Mr. Watzvial. I understand what it means, but I think it might be good to just talk briefly and give us an explanation as to what it means to canvas the vote.
Okay. Well, I can, if I give you the legal definition, then Ms. Spicula can give you the more practical aspects of it. So the legal definition is under NRS 293.032. And summarizing this, it says, "Canvas" means a review of the election results by the Board of County Commissioners, by which any errors within the election results are officially noted and the official election results are declared.
Okay, so it's really about the election results and confirming that what's been given us is essentially correct in terms of the results?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Spicula, I have a couple of questions in regards to the election summary report, and I'm just going to look at this briefly with you. So for example, I'm looking at the Republican Electric Group. Total votes cast in the primary for 2018 were 31,605 is what it shows between election day, absentee, early vote, and mail-in ballot. Is that correct, based upon?
I don't have it in front of me, but I believe you. You're looking at it, it's probably correct.
So then I'm looking through, and so in the first, in the first couple Republican races, for example, the United States Senate race, and also for the representative in Congress rate, it just shows times cast of 31,605, which is, which definitely correlates with the numbers of total ballots cast here. You move further into the, you move further into the other races, you go to look at Republican governor, and that number drops to 31,602 times cast. Why the reason for the discrepancy from 31,605? Is it just, is that was 631,605 voted for the, is that what that was in times cast?
I'd have to look exactly at what you're looking at. There are instances where people undervote. So somebody might cast a ballot, they can cast a completely blank ballot. It still counts as a vote. It's just it doesn't produce results in those categories.
So, but that, so that's my point. So 31,065 shows times cast, 31,605, and then it shows an underneath that, so I'm looking at the representative in Congress. It says times cast, 31,605, but it shows an undervote of 707. And then you go to the governor's race where it says 31,602, and the undervote's 236. So I'm not, I'm seeing some discrepancies here, and I'm just, I just have some questions about it. So if you or somebody could show me and walk me through that, that would be great. I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, because somebody votes like on the governor's race, they don't have to vote on the lieutenant governor or anybody else on that ballot. And we did see that with some of our votes cast, where people would vote for one school board member but nothing else on their ballot. I mean, it's plausible, but again, we have to go through those with you and kind of look at the numbers and see what we're looking at.
That would be great, yeah. Because I just, like I said, I see that 31,605 is the total votes cast for the Republican group, and then you go back, and it's the same, and the same for the Democrat. Democratic Party, 28,9102, and then you go to Senate, 29,102, but then you go to Democrat, and it's, it's six or seven votes off. It goes to 2906. So there's some, there's some differences. So if you could walk me through that and just kind of walk me through that, those undervotes and the overvotes, and what those, each race, so that I have a little bit better understanding. I appreciate it. And then, Madam Chair, just one quick comment. I have to say a huge thank you to all the volunteers that did participate in the election day and primary voting. I mean, it wouldn't be without those individuals and all of our voter registrar voter staff. It was flawless in my vote. I voted on election day. Polling workers were pleasant. They were very inviting. They were, they were helpful in all the, you know, challenges with the new machines and getting people registered. I was lucky enough to take my son with me, and they were very friendly to him, and, you know, I think so, we may, our volunteers are really what make our polling places, and it was an absolute pleasure to vote. And it was, you know, as being as a constitutional right for every citizen, I thought that they had the opportunity, and we made it a pleasant experience for everybody and addressed every challenge immediately. So, once again, thank you to your staff, thank you to you, and all the volunteers that took time out of their busy schedules for two weeks, and then, again, on election day to facilitate early election and primary election. That was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. I do have, commissioners, any other questions? Okay, I do have two public comment, two people sign in for public comment. So we will start with them. Mr. Frank Wright.
I'd like to thank the commissioners for hearing and registrar voters for paying attention to this. It's pretty critical. It was interesting to see Vice Chair Jung explain that she would never have her mother work at the polls after she was elected official. So it needs not to be said that she would never show up. It's called integrity. And I think that when you're an elected official and you represent the community, we're looking for integrity. And this individual did not display an ounce of integrity. And if we're not going to hold people accountable for their behavior, then we're going to continue to have problems. And my question is, what should we do as a community, as a city, as a state, to guarantee voter integrity and not have voter fraud? So I looked to our district attorney, and I say, "What are you going to do? What's your role in our state to ensure that our voting laws are enforced?" And my question is, what can you do? While the Board can supervise Incline's elected officials, you can remove them from office, which I don't think is a bad idea. The district attorney can follow state law, and if there was inappropriate behavior or voter fraud, he can carry out the laws of the state and investigate, which is part of the job that he has as a district attorney. So what I'm asking is not really anything, but what I'm suggesting is oversight and to set an example so that we know in this state that we're serious about voter integrity, and that when we go to the polls and we cast our votes, that those votes are being counted and they're being launched fairly. I ran for election in Incline. I was shocked at the results because they didn't seem to be the way they should have been. I think this is a problematic situation that goes on year after year. A lot of voters in Incline don't vote because they see the same thing. It's entrenched. I think we've opened the door to how bad it is, but it's our district attorney's job to find out really how bad it is, and I think it's pretty bad. So, thank you.
It was a very nice presentation on the voter process and the process of counting the votes and et cetera, but it did not address, what if the laws are compromised? It was, there was nothing addressed on that. What is the recourse? What happens? I would ask that I and other concerned citizens of Incline Village would ask as a district attorney, investigate the allegations, investigate how the laws apply to the situation due to the complaints received. Could this be criminally prosecuted? That's why we have a district attorney. Why do we have laws in this state if allegations and complaints are not investigated and prosecuted, if necessary? This becomes a do-your-job-as-district-attorney issue. Is there a possibility of a fraudulent situation that could disqualify a candidate, if not, due to the location? What recourse do the other candidates and citizens of Incline Village have? This needs to be addressed, and it also needs to be addressed in voter presentations, like from our voter registrar. It was a great presentation, but it wasn't comprehensive. It wasn't what could happen and what are the recourses for the citizens and the other candidates. So I think that needs to be addressed at this level. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Martini. I see no other public comments, so bring it back to the Board. And my little note says Mr. Lipparelli, but I think it's Mr. Watzvial.
There's a couple of things, starting with, it's a very common misconception that the district attorney's office has some power to investigate crimes. The district attorney's office is not a police agency. The district attorney's office prosecutes crimes that are presented from law enforcement agencies. So they do the investigations, they present the case, and then the district attorney reviews whether or not to prosecute the crime. There's no process by which a citizen or anybody else can initiate a criminal complaint process with the DA's office. The way that that happens is to file a police report for any violation of law of any kind, and then it will get investigated. And if the police agencies decide after they do an investigation that there's something to prosecute, they will forward it, and then it's up to the district attorney to make their decision at that point. So that's all I have on that topic. It's a common misconception. It's not criticism of anybody's comments. We hear it all the time. The second thing that I wanted to do is, if we could, if Ms. Spicula, if we could ask a couple of questions, just to make a clear record on the canvas of the returns. And this is something that we've done routinely in the past. This isn't anything new. So, and it's just to make sure that there's compliance with NRS 293.387. Has the registrar had the opportunity to review the election results?
Yes, I have.
And were there any errors that were noted in the election results?
No, there were not.
Were there any clerical errors that were discovered after the canvas of the results?
No. I mean, we haven't, because we're doing the canvas now.
Right. Understood. I'm looking at my own question and understanding how that threw you off. But you haven't noticed any clerical errors?
No.
Okay. And is there any need for any changes to the vote?
No.
All right. Madam Chair, then those answers are sufficient to declare the results of the election.
Thank you very much. All right, we've done public comment. I'm looking for a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to...
Discussion, Madam Chair.
Just one moment. Okay. Motion and a second to approve the proposed declaration of canvas of the vote in order for the 2018 primary election. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for legal. Mr. Watzvial, I know you noted law enforcement, but would a, would a more appropriate place be the Secretary of State's office to request something happen in regards to looking into some type of violation that an elected official made?
Whether it's more appropriate, I don't know, but that's certainly an option.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Manager Slaughter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarification, the motion in the staff report is the motion that was made, which, just to put it on the record, this is a motion to approve the proposed declaration of canvas of the vote in order for the 2018 primary election.
In that case, all those, we have done public comments, so all those in favor of the vote, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please cast your vote on the screen when it comes up.
That's not working at the moment, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I assume that everyone is...
To my knowledge, everyone voted yes.
Okay.
Show of hands?
A show of hands, since we can't get it on the screen.
Aye.
Please note that Commissioner, or Vice Chair Jung has left the dais and so is not voting.
Thank you.
Motion carries for nothing with Commissioner, with Vice Chairman Jung gone. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair. Next item, you want to move on to item nine? Yes. Madam Chair, if I may, we're on to item nine. Can I, would I, would you willing to allow me to read the donations this morning?
Actually, Mr. Manager, I'd like to stop that by because we do have a team of people here who want to hear 18, and we did make a commitment to them that we'd do it before noon. It's now two minutes after, so we want to get 18 on, but I think we should do the consent and the block vote and get those out of the way and then do 18 if that's okay.
Consent, block, 18?
Uh huh. If that works for everybody, is that all right? Okay? So...
All right. Consent agenda then is item 10, and is represented today through items 10A1 through item 10F2.
Any changes, Mr. Manager?
None that I'm aware of.
Commissioners, any comments, any changes?
Comment, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you. Just a comment on 10D3 about the bonds for the Golden Eagle Regional Park. Just, I want to thank the commission for hopefully supporting that, and it's, it's just a wonderful park.
It is.
And in fact, we have already outgrown it.
Oh my.
In its very large size, we could use another, just the same size in the region. In fact, we could use multiple, so it really speaks to the need. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to let the Board know, I believe you received an email from Ann Marie Grant. She provided me with a copy of that as well, which I will be putting in the record. It was on Agenda Item 10B.
Okay. Anything else? I see no public comment. Only thing on here is Commissioner Hartung, so if you would erase yourself, Commissioner Hartung? Yeah. So, no, I see no public comment. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right. So all those in favor of the...
Do we have a motion?
Oh, that's right. We need a vote, we need a motion.
Your motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please confirm on the screen. It will be up on the screen, I understand.
It should be. Well, is it on your screens?
It's not on either screen.
Okay.
The consent usually isn't always on.
There, there you go. I assume I'm correct.
Okay. Motion passes for to nothing with all, with Vice Chairman Jung absent. And so with that, let's go to a block vote.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to put some items today into a block vote.
All right.
All right. I'd like to put into block vote, and this is in form of a motion, put in the block vote, items 11 with Wayne Holland being recommended as a member to fill the vacancy on the Washoe County Library Board of Trustees. Item 12, item 13, item 14, item 15, item 16, item 17, item 19, and item 20.
Commissioners, any questions, concerns?
Let me make sure.
Okay, Mr. Manager?
Hold on, we need to do a second.
I'll, I'll second. And I do need some discussion on... So when I read all the names, with the recommendation from... Okay. The motion, the motion, Mr. Holland. I read it like that. The problem with going through these things. Do you have item 20, Commissioner Lucy?
Yes, item 20.
Okay. I just...
Your mic, Mr. Hartung?
I'm sorry, Madam.
Your mic?
Your mic?
It is on.
Thank you.
I'm just not... I'm just not, I'm just not next to it. Go ahead and read them, and then when we get to the point of purposes of discussion, I'll, I'd like just some information on the money that we've pulled out of contingency, especially with respect to listed in background, Mr. Manager.
Which item number?
That's item 20.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, would you...
So I will read, I'll read those proposed for the block vote. Excuse me. Beginning with item 11, it's a recommendation to appoint one candidate from a pool of applicants, including Tyler Balance, Christopher Berry, Wayne Holland, Gabrielle McGregor, and Betsy Wilson, to fill one vacating seat on the Washoe County Library Board of Trustees, with term effective July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2022. And note that the motion should include the recommendation of Wayne Holland for that position. Item 12, it's a recommendation to authorize the comptroller to renew the excess liability insurance policy with Pelias Insurance Company for $189,881, effective July 1, 2018. 2018. Wondering if that's an error in that item?
Yeah, we've got 2018 twice.
Let me read, reread that, and I believe the 2018 was just, just typed in twice. So, item 12, it's a recommendation to authorize the comptroller to renew the excess liability insurance policy with Pelias Insurance Company for $189,881, effective July 1, 2018, and authorize the comptroller's office to sign the applications and agreements necessary to bind coverage with funding from Risk Management Fund. Item 13 is a recommendation to authorize the comptroller to renew the excess workers' compensation insurance policy with New York Marine and General Insurance Company for one year at a premium of $274,755, and the property boiler and machinery cyber liability and pollution liability insurance policy with the Public Entity Property Insurance Program for one year at a premium not to exceed $532,358, effective July 1, 2018, and authorize the comptroller's office to sign the applications and agreements necessary to bind coverage, funding from the Risk Management Fund source. Item 14 is a recommendation to approve a three-year renewal agreement between the county of Washoe and Washoe Legal Services, provide for the legal representation of children in the Child Protective Services System, effective July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021, with an fixed annual amount of $226,014. Item 15 is a recommendation to accept additional incentive funds from the State of Nevada Child Support Enforcement Program in the amount of $662,699.14 earned from the federal fiscal years 2014 and 2015, and authorize the comptroller to make the appropriate fiscal year 2018 budget amendment. Item 16 is a recommendation to accept cash donations in the amount of $325,850 from the Wilbur May Foundation, $220,000 restricted for fiscal year 2019, general operating support of the Wilbur D. May Center, excluding all county overhead, $100,000 restricted to support fiscal year 2019 temporary exhibits at the Wilbur D. May Museum, and $5,850 restricted for the production of May Arboretum Trail maps in fiscal year 2018. Item 17 is a recommendation to approve an agreement for professional consulting services between Washoe County and Clabberdy Design Studio for the Washoe County Ninth Street Administration Complex Master Plan Update, in the amount of $270,590, and approve a separate contingency fund in the amount of $30,000 for the project. Item 19 is a recommendation to approve 2018 Emergency Management Performance Grant, letter of intent stating that the Nevada Division of Emergency Management is awarding $170,877 for fiscal year 2018, retroactive from October 1, 2017 through March 31, 2019, which requires a $170,877 match, and authorize the comptroller's office to make appropriate budget adjustments. If approved, authorize the county manager who is designated to sign the grant or documents when received, and authorize the comptroller's office to make the appropriate budget amendments. And item 20 is a recommendation to approve the use of general fund contingency in the amount of $1,746,058.19 to cover previously approved unbudgeted expenditures for fiscal year 2018, approve cross-function appropriation transfers of $512,000 within the general fund required to move savings from one function to another function so as to bring the budget authority to the level of anticipated actual expenditures required for fiscal year 2018, and direct the comptroller's office to make the appropriate appropriation transfers prior to June 30, 2018.
Okay.
And there was a question on item 20, I believe?
Yes. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Page 2, Mr. Manager, of the staff report, it shows that the flood project for North Valleys flooding, we're putting in $1,118,237.43, and another for the flood barriers, another $81,762.57, which actually coincidentally comes out to exactly $1.2 million that we intend on spending on Lemon Valley issues directly. Correct, Mr. Manager?
Correct.
Okay, there's, there always seems to be an assertion that we're not, we're doing nothing, and yet, here we are, we're spending $1.2 million. And I would tell you, thank you. I would thank the board for approving that, and that Washoe County is doing what we can, and we are responding. It just, it takes a little bit of time, and so I would like to just draw the board's attention to that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. And I see no public comment on any of these items. Do, Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment?
I didn't see any either.
Okay. So we have, we have a motion and a second. So all those in favor of the block vote as detailed?
Do you see the voting on your screen?
I see none.
Okay. Thank you.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And is it going to come on our screen?
Apparently not.
Ah, okay. The motion carries for to nothing with Commissioner, Vice Chair Jung missing from our, from the day, so. And with that, I would like to go to 18, if that's acceptable to everybody.
Item 18 is a recommendation to, one, approve an indoor tennis courts development agreement between Washoe County and Indoor Tennis LLC, a Nevada Limited Liability Company, based on the unsolicited proposal for an indoor tennis facility and related improvements to be located at the Washoe County Golf Course property. And two, authorize the county manager to execute after a land survey and parcel map are completed a ground lease between Washoe County and Indoor Tennis LLC, a Nevada Limited Liability Company, to lease a three-acre parcel adjacent to the Reno Tennis Facility on Plumas Avenue, on which Indoor Tennis LLC will have the proposed indoor tennis facility and related improvements constructed. Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager, is here to walk us through this item.
Mr. Solero. First, let me ask you, commissioners, do you want an extensive, detailed report or a summary of this long and detailed report? Commissioner Hartung?
Short.
Short, okay. Everybody says the short version. Mr. Solero.
All right. Good afternoon. For the record, Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager. Commissioners, this item is brought before you after a long journey through Washoe County. We, the Board of County Commissioners, adopted an unsolicited proposal policy, which essentially is a mechanism for private entities or public-private partnerships to enter into the county system. In this case, we have a private entity working through, getting not-for-profit status to create something that is missing within our park system. That is what the proposal is to us. We do not currently have any indoor tennis facilities. We have outdoor tennis facilities, but no indoor tennis facilities. So staff went through and took a look at this proposal. This has gone through a couple of gyrations. I do have a vicinity map here. There are a couple of spots at the Washoe County Golf Course property. This is Exhibit A to the development agreement, and if I could get the overhead when the staff in the back of the room gets a chance, I can point out a couple of locations, but...
Could we get the overhead? You just, you want to put it on the overhead?
Yeah, if I could just put it up here on the...
If we could get the overhead, please?
That's the easiest way to do it. We were originally approached, Washoe County, just for, so this is Plumas. This is Plumas Street here, Washoe County Golf Course. Moana is down here at the bottom, runs right up along here. So we were originally approached for a five-acre parcel that Washoe County owns down here in this location. However, there's a deed restriction on that property. And so the proposer went back and took a look, and has now proposed this site here. There's an existing leased tennis facility to the city of Reno, right here, and there's about a three-acre parcel that is unused for Washoe Golf Course adjacent to that. This proposal came in for approximately three and a half, or a three-acre leased parcel, as well as additional parking to support this use at that location. As I mentioned, staff put it through the unsolicited proposal process. We've also taken it to the Open Space and Park Commission. The Open Space and Park Commission, however, did not take any action on this proposal. And so I've brought it forward to the Board of County Commissioners. We are styling this after the ground lease and development agreement that we utilized for the Reno ICE proposal at our South Valleys Park. Very similar, same, same language, same process. The proposer has three years to essentially get the money associated with this so we can execute that. We want to make sure the money is all there before we break ground on a project. And so with that, that's the proposal I have in front of you. I do know that the proposer is in the audience, if you have any questions specific to how this relates.
Commissioners, any questions? We will ask, we'll go to public comment then and ask Mr. Ken Crater to come forward. Welcome back, Mr. Crater.
Thank you. For the record, Ken Crater, I'll be brief too, but I just want to thank both staff and the county commission for helping make this happen, and your leadership with the unsolicited proposal to allow basically joint-use facilities on parkland. To me, this is exactly what that was intended to do. And this facility will provide for rebuilding our youth tennis program within our community, because without an indoor tennis facility, they can't practice year-round and can't even expect to compete with other communities. It will also help rebuild our high school tennis program, which I know is important to all of us. But also, it will allow for opportunities, for example, like children from the Boys and Girls Club to learn how to play tennis, and hopefully for some of them to develop a love of the sport. And also important is for economic development, for companies and families moving into this community to have these types of facilities like ice skating and tennis, where they're heavily involved in those type of activities. Now they can move to Reno where they might not have otherwise. So, thank you very much. We look forward to moving this thing forward quickly. We've been in discussions with numerous banks, small business loans, and also potential donations, but we will make this thing happen and make it a facility that our community can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crater. Commissioners, any comments, questions? Commissioner Hartung?
Just a comment, Madam Chair, and I'd just like to thank Mr. Crater and the proponents of this. There's, other than staff time associated, there is no fiscal impact to Washoe County. Correct, Mr. Solero?
That is correct. Just some staff time to oversee, make sure this is built to Washoe County standards.
Yeah, yeah, wonderful. Thank you so much for the collaboration. I'm fully supportive. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. We have done public comments, so I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion, Commissioner Hartung, and a second from Commissioner Lucy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please cast your vote on the screen.
I have nothing.
Assuming it comes up. Have you been kicked out?
Yeah.
You may have to reboot.
I'm joining again.
Okay.
Let me see if this helps.
We have fussy computers today.
I don't have... I have no ability to...
Ah, okay.
To vote, Madam Chair.
Did you, all those who voted aye, please raise their hand?
Yep.
Okay, so, so for purposes of the public, since we can't seem to get it on, motion passes for to nothing with Vice Chair Jung not with us. Congratulations, gentlemen. I know that all of you, including our staff, have been working long and hard on getting this in, and it is really a great project for us to have an indoor tennis court in this growing community, so thank you very much. And with that, Mr. Manager, I would like to ask if we could take a little lunch break?
Sure, we just do. We have only item 21 left, don't we?
We have to, we have to go back and do the...
Two, one, go.
Yeah, so let's, let's take a little lunch break, and then we'll do the donations when we get back. So shall we say 1 o'clock? That should give us plenty of time. All right. We are in recess until 1 o'clock. We are in recess until one o'clock.
Wait. I believe it's going to go to donations, number nine.
Item nine is your, are your donations?
Madam Chair, if you would allow me to, I'd like to read the donations today in the absence of Madam Vice Chair. So, today, we have a number of donations on the docket. 981, we're accepting a cash donation in the amount of $4.03 from Red Robin to support the juvenile programs at Wittenberg Hall, along with 61 young adult books, estimated value of $300. So we would like to donate to by the International Society of Key Women Educators, Delta, Kappa, Gamma, Lambda Chapter, and direct to Controller's Office to make the appropriate budget adjustments. So we want to thank them for continuing to help the children up at the Wittenberg Hall. And 982, we're accepting a cash donation and in-kind donation, a cash donation of $20,153.71, and in-kind donations estimated value of $20,700 from various businesses, organizations, and individuals for the Regional Parks and Open Spaces Program and Facilities. You know, once again, continuing to support, we want to thank all those businesses and individuals in our community that continue to support our parks and open spaces. We do have one of the best parks programs here in northern Nevada, and obviously, and I would like to venture to say in the western United States, with our open spaces, and we'd like to maintain that beauty. So thank you to those. Also, 983, we're accepting a cash donation of $100 from Robert and Diana Welms to the county, to Washoe County, on behalf of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, to purchase equipment for the K-9 unit. Obviously, we want to thank the Welms, the Welms family, for their gracious donation of $100, continue to support the K-9 unit at the Sheriff's Office. And last is 984, we're accepting a cash donation to Washoe County Human Services Agency in the amount of $3,042.50 for the period of March 1st, 2018, through April 30th, 2018, and the amount of $18,500 for the periods of July 1, 2017, through April 30th, 2018, dedicated to Human Services Family Engagement Center. Once again, a major, major, important portion or facility within our Human Services Agency, that Family Engagement Center and the work they do there. So we want to thank those donations that go specifically to engaging families. So with that, we would look for, I would make that a motion to accept all 981 through A4.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I see no public comment. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So all those in favor of the motion to accept the donations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Yeah, you know, it isn't on our, a motion passes four to nothing with Vice Chair Kitty Jung absent. It is not on...
Yeah, we can't figure out quite why, so I'm trying to enter it on my end so you can approve it up on the screen.
Okay. So I mean, it's also not on the screen to cast the motion.
Right. We found that out during the break.
All right, Mr. Manager.
Our next item would be item 21. This is a public hearing, and this is appeal to the Washoe County Board of Adjustments, denial of variance case number WPVAR17-0007. This project includes a variance to reduce front yard setback along State Line Road from 20 feet to zero feet, to reduce the front yard setback along State Route 28 from 20 feet to eight feet, and to reduce side yard setback from 10 feet to three feet to allow for commercial building on a 2,000 square foot property. And the commission can either affirm, reverse, or modify the decision of the Board of Adjustment. And I believe our planning manager, Trevor Lloyd, is here on this item.
Mr. Lloyd, welcome.
Turn this on first. I have a very brief presentation, or I have a substantial presentation. I'll leave that up to the board if...
A brief one will be fine.
That's what I figured you'd say, thank you. For the record, Trevor Lloyd with planning a building. The item before you today, as indicated, is a request for a variance to vary the setbacks on three sides. One is a, well, two of them are front yards and one is a side yard setback, as indicated. Next slide, please. The subject property is located in Crystal Bay, at 2 North Lake Avenue. It is essentially a piece of property that's bisected by the state line. The property owners own both pieces. The subject property to the east is on the Nevada side, and they also own the property immediately to the west, on the California side. Next slide. As I indicated, it's a request to reduce all three setbacks, all three property lines, in order to establish, or to allow for the construction of an eating and drinking establishment. All right, at the April 5th Board of Adjustment meeting, the Board decided to deny the request by a vote of three to one. The primary reason was they could not make the second finding of no detriment, essentially relating to the lack of parking, traffic issues, and pedestrian safety. Next slide. However, the item was heard by the Incline Village Crystal Bay Citizen Advisory Board at their September 25th meeting. They unanimously recommended approval of the requested variance. Now, this is a very unique and challenging property. As you can see from the overhead, it's got a strange triangle shape, and it's also very small. And so in that regard, it's a model for a variance in terms of meeting the first finding, which is that of a hardship due to a unique circumstance. Clearly, that the Board of Adjustment had no problem making that finding. However, it presented some challenges in terms of whether or not it would present some impacts during construction. Can I see the next slide, please? And as you can see from this overhead photo, the property actually extends into the travel lane for State Line Road. And that was the primary concern raised by the Board of Adjustment, that access into and out of the site may pose a problem if it is constructed. There would need to be some substantial changes to State Line Road. Additionally, they identified parking at this location as a reason for concern. Certainly, a project of this size would require up to 11 parking spaces per code. Now, to mitigate that, it's located in an area where there is a good deal of tourism, and there's a number of hotels in the immediate area that would accommodate parking on-site, and that will be identified by the applicant or the appellant in his remarks. But this location is a key piece of the puzzle for the overall redevelopment of Crystal Bay. Not only do you have Cal Neva being redeveloped, but also the Boulder Bay property to the north. And this represents really the gateway from California into Nevada, into this community, and it certainly is blighted at this time. Now, the applicants will plan to redevelopment, not just this property, but the property to the west. And as you can see from the overhead, that currently, that building located to the west is located on both, within Nevada and California. Next slide. So these are the findings that need to be made. Again, the Board could make all of the findings except for the second one of no detriment. The applicant has identified some areas of mitigation to help improve parking, as well as traffic and pedestrian movement. That will include public transportation, improved public pedestrian access. They will provide for valet parking and shuttle service. Also, they want to promote bicycle parking, and they anticipate that there would be need for off-street parking for employees, as well as parking agreements with some of their adjoining neighbors. Now, what you see on the overhead are some of the car movements. Now, what we have is before and after, so what you see is the existing access. Currently, there's no real issues with car movements, both in and out. However, there are some concerns with truck movements, and that's the current situation. But there is alternate access to the south, that they can get to State Route 28. Next slide. Now, this overhead shows the proposed access, and as you can see, with the improvement to the site, there would be adequate movement for cars. Would still be problems for trucks moving in and out of State Line Road. Next slide. We have worked diligently with engineering and capital projects, and the Traffic Engineer, as well as NDOT, to mitigate or provide some conditions that would mitigate some of those concerns that were raised by the Board of Adjustment. So in the event that this Board decides to overturn the decision of the Board of Adjustment and approve the appeal, staff is confident there is conditions that would address most of the concerns raised at the Board of Adjustment. Next slide. With that, staff offers the two possible motions, one motion for denial and one for approval. And I'm available for any questions that you have.
Thanks, Trevor. You said the applicant is here. Can we have him come forward and address any possible questions? Oh, okay. Just one moment. Commissioner Hartong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Trevor, and I don't mean to be nitpicky in this particular scenario, but you said you were able to, staff felt that they were able to address most. What does most mean? Which can you not address?
Well, clearly, the site cannot accommodate any parking on-site.
Right.
And that could be problematic. If you're talking about ADA compliance and parking for ADA, they would have to be located on the adjoining property to the west, so...
Which is, it's still the same parcel, but it's just in California.
Exactly.
So, and it's still the same business.
Correct.
But it still does exist.
It does.
Even though it doesn't exist in Washoe County.
All right. Thank you.
That's all I needed to...
Thank you. No.
Hello, Commissioners. Andrew Ryan, representing EVO Real Estate. I'm from PR Design and Engineering. I'm a land use planner and civil engineer licensed in California and Nevada, and work almost exclusively in Lake Tahoe for challenging projects. I do have a presentation, but if there was questions on the front end, I could answer those now before I go into the presentation. Nope?
You know, I don't, I'm not even sure that you need to do a presentation other than to, maybe perhaps let me ask you a couple of questions. How's that?
Absolutely.
So you've worked with staff here, and although the parking that needs to be, to be ADA compliant is in California, it's still available on the same lot?
It is.
Okay, so the car, you're actually improving car access a little bit by the maps that were put up by Trevor, and truck access isn't going to be any better, but then they have another way of accessing 28, so they really don't have to go through there, correct?
Correct. And one clarification, the exhibit that showed the truck access, that's for a wheelbase 50 truck. That is the largest tractor-trailer allowed on that highway. Typically, deliveries up there aren't using those larger trucks. It's much smaller trucks anyway, but there are alternate routes, and I think that's the important part, is that we are not limiting access.
That parcel is very blighted right now, as I understand, correct?
It is. It's circa 1956 construction, and it has seen no functional improvement or investment since then.
And it's the entrance into Crystal Bay from California, so everybody who's driving on 28 drives past this extremely blighted property into an area that is really growing and is developing lots of really nice things. I've spent a lot of time up there lately, way more than I really want to, actually. But it's really a beautiful area. Commissioners, I, yes, go ahead. Commissioner Hartong.
And I'm not sure who can answer this, perhaps Mr. Lloyd. Who would be responsible for the changes to State Line Road? You said that there would have to be some upgrades or some changes to State Line. Would that be NDOT and Caltrans responsibility, or would it be the applicant's responsibility, Trevor?
Given that it's in Nevada, it would be primarily NDOT with cooperation. It was a coordinated effort between Washoe County and NDOT, because it is an intersection. At that intersection is really where you're going to see most of the improvements that are being made. And so we have some fairly stringent conditions from NDOT requiring, you know, further study, final design plans and everything to ensure that it meets their criteria.
So taxpayers would be responsible to upgrade the road?
No, that would be, the applicant would be responsible for those improvements.
Okay, okay, all right. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to understand. I want to make sure that that's a condition of approval.
Correct.
That they would be responsible for the upgrades to that intersection. Okay, good. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
So, we have findings that we need to make, Mr. Wattsviel. I will be happy to make this motion, and basically, my motion is to, you want to put that back up there so I can read it accurately? Would you put the motion back up there? Please? From Trevor's slide?
We do ask for public comment.
Ah, we do ask for public comment, sorry. And I see no public comment listed on my list.
There is no one signed in. However, I wanted to let you know that I received a letter from Richard Romo in support of the applicant, which I will place on the record.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Yeah, so I would move to approve the appeal and reverse the denial of the variance for case number WPVAR17-0007. And the approval is based on the Board's ability to make all four of the findings, which I believe we are doing in conjunction with Mr. Lloyd's assessment of what is doable and that the, and based on the applicant's willingness to work with everybody to put it all together. However, I need to say that. Is that a good enough motion, Mr. Wattsviel?
Just to clarify, the findings are required by Washoe County Code, Section 110 804.25. And so I think those are the findings you're referring to.
They are, the findings I'm referring to. And basically, that says that although the parking is not in, one of the things I think that's of question is the parking is not in the state of Nevada, but there is parking on this lot. It just happens to be right across the state line in the state of California.
Second, and if I could clarify too, there, again, there would be neighboring properties that may be in California, may be in Nevada, and we would require a parking agreement.
Yes. And this is, and just as, we have a motion and a second, and so just as comment, this is a very blighted area, and this project, which I've seen the maps on several times, is a project that will really clean the entrance into Nevada from California. Or the last thing somebody sees when they leave Nevada and goes into California, that it will really clean this up, and it's going to be beautiful, I think, when it's completed, so...
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
If I understand correctly, the agreements for parking, because it's the same property owner...
Yeah.
I'm not sure how they need to make any agreements with themselves.
I don't think there's a need for an agreement. There's just a need...
Well, that's what Mr. Lloyd said in terms of, I guess there has to be a technical agreement, because one resides in California and is a different planning jurisdiction. One resides in Nevada, which is, of course, Nevada and Washoe County's planning jurisdiction. And so there just needs to be, I guess, a formal agreement, but it, but since they're the same property owner, it's, this is a little odd.
It is a little odd. Because they're in two separate states, they're not technically the same, under the same ownership, but they're same, different lots, different parcels.
Right.
And each of those parcels could be sold. And so you would want some kind of an agreement preferably recorded in perpetuity.
I see.
That provides both.
Understood.
And we would also provide flexibility that the applicant can go out to other neighbors and also get some kind of a reciprocal parking agreement from them as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. So we, Mr. Wattsviel?
Madam Chair, are you making, well, is your motion final at this point? Or did you want to add something to the effect that it's conditioned on the receipt of appropriate parking agreements, whether with adjoining landowners or elsewhere?
I think we already did that, but let's put it in, actually, in that word, so that that's part of the motion, Madam Clerk, that there will, it will be clear that there will be an agreement that parking, that this lot is not going to be sold separately from the California lot, so that there will be parking that will be part of the agreement.
Seconder agrees.
Okay. All right. So, we have no public comment. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. I'm assuming motion carries. Yes, it looks like motion carries four to nothing with Commissioner, you bet, Commissioner, Vice Chair Jung absent. See you, guys. Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Next item is item 22, and we have two second readings under this item. Both have public hearings. This is for adoption, possible adoption of an ordinance, admitting ordinance number 1,000, and adoption of an ordinance imposing a fee on parcels of land in Washoe County, District 24.
Okay. And, oh. Open the public hearing? We are opening a public, well, we already opened because we're in a public hearing. So we need a second reading, Madam Clerk.
All righty. For the first of the two readings under this item, this, if adopted, will be ordinance number 1620, and ordinance, admitting ordinance number 1,000, in order to change the boundaries of District number 24, groundwater remediation, and providing other matters relating thereto. This was previously Bill number 1806.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hartong.
Move to adopt ordinance, ordinance number 1621, as outlined in the staff report.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I see no public hearing on, or no public comments on this one. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Four to, four to zero with Vice Chair Jung absent. Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, our next item would be item 23, but we can remove that from today's agenda. That's the possible closed session for discussing labor negotiations. Brings us to item 24, which is public comment.
I see no public comment listed, Madam Clerk.
I don't see any either.
Okay. We have no public comments, so we will close public comment. Bring it back to Mr. Manager.
Item 25 is Commissioner County Manager's announcements.
Okay. Do Commissioners, Mr. Manager, you have anything?
I do. Earlier in the meeting, and I will report back to Commissioner and Commissioner.
Move to adopt ordinance number 1720 as outlined in the staff report.
It's 1620.
1620. My bad. I'm so sorry.
All right.
I don't know why I vote seven.
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Hartong.
Who is the second?
I'm sorry?
Who is the second? Thank you.
Okay. So I see no public comment, and this is a second reading, so I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I can't put, I can't put it in the system because we've got two votes to happen on this item.
Okay, all right. So motion carries and by a vote of four to nothing with Vice Chair Jung absent. Okay.
And the next reading under this agenda item is, will be ordinance number 1621, and ordinance imposing a fee on the parcels of land in Washoe County, Nevada, District number 24, groundwater remediation to pay the costs of developing and carrying out a plan for remediation and prescribing other matters relating thereto. This was previously Bill number 1807.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hartong.
Move to adopt ordinance, ordinance number 1621 as outlined in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I see no public hearing on, or no public comments on this one. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Four to, four to zero with Vice Chair Jung absent. Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, our next item would be item 23, but we can remove that from today's agenda. That's the possible closed session for discussing labor negotiations. Brings us to item 24, which is public comment.
I see no public comment listed, Madam Clerk.
I don't see any either.
Okay. We have no public comments, so we will close public comment. Bring it back to Mr. Manager.
Item 25 is Commissioner County Manager's announcements.
Okay. Do Commissioners, Mr. Manager, you have anything?
I do. Earlier in the meeting, and I will report back to Commissioner Jung, earlier in the meeting, she had asked regarding a reporting system for opioids and overdoses, and I was, had been informed that the Sheriff's Office, statewide, there is a system that's coming together, and the Sheriff's Office is planning to participate in that, and we will reach out and make sure that all offices, all departments, fire, RIMS, others are reporting properly to that system.
Good. Okay. Commissioners, anybody have anything? All right. Seeing nothing, we will close number 25, and with that, we are adjourned.